Do you want to, when we get to the difference in the language for that resolution? I think I have this right. Basically, it was changed because we eliminated the assessment.
It's in the future.
I may ask. Meeting, it is May 19th, 6:15 PM. Mr. Noonan is excused this evening, and Mr. Harris is with us electronically by phone. So can you hear me and Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll stand for the pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business is our committee of the whole, President Barrow.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Council in front of me, you have your agenda, and first thing I would like to do, actually, is make a motion to move item 10B on the consent calendar to new business.
10B, you said?
10B, right. It's with the W2s.
10B will be 11E?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Second that motion. We'll call the roll on the-
Is it B or D?
B.
B isn't boy.
10B will be 11E.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on that? We will call the roll on moving that to new business.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Continue, yep.
And if there's any other questions or concerns on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, Councilman Margot?
Yes.
Puffenberger, sorry.
So I received the updated resolution for streetlights, and I noticed a couple differences from our last reading, so I have some questions. So I noticed that the, we are no longer referencing ordinance 16-2024. That was something I specifically asked about last meeting to ensure we weren't raising rates, so I wondered why that was removed.
Go ahead. I, go ahead. I think I know the answer to this, but correct me if I'm wrong, if I can help.
It's just a resolution, a necessity for the assessment, so it didn't need to reference anything else.
Okay. We just left it in last time.
The title was different last time. We just made sure it was in the body.
Okay.
Yeah.
Basically separated the resolution from the assessment piece, and the assessment will come as a different proposal.
Okay, so then that's why, so why did reference to the ORC leave and instead we're referencing Mami Code?
Because it is under Mami Code that we do assessments. We have our own assessment process.
Okay, so then that was, once again, just, was that part of the two combined the last time? And now that that has changed, it's now changed to the ORC, or was this just wrong for the first reading?
It could have been under, I think previously it said ORC, but that was a mistake. It should have said Mami Code, so.
Okay.
Any more questions on that?
No, you said the title change was, we were separating it out, so, nope, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other concerns or questions? Haven't seen none. This concludes committee of the whole.
Okay, thank you. We'll move to citizen comments. The meetings of council are business meetings for the purpose of discussion of council and consideration of matters or issues related to the business of Mami. The purpose of the meeting rules are to promote efficient, orderly, and productive meetings and reduce disruption at the meetings. This meeting of Mami City Council is a lawful meeting. Under Mami Code and the Ohio Advice Code, no person with purpose to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting shall do any act which obstructs or interferes with the conduct of the meeting. Members of the public are allowed the opportunity to speak under the rules set by council. All comments should be respectful. Council meetings are not the forum for personal attacks. The citizen comment period is meant for matters or issues related to the business of the city of Mami. The city provides for alternative methods or channels of communication for anybody to express themselves on other topics that are not related to this meeting. The city maintains a website which provides a forum to leave comments or complaints. The council and/or mayor have email addresses posted on the city website where they can be reached. Matters you believe are important to Mami and complaints may be made through emails as an alternative. Also, website submissions, conversations with council members can also be had, or by mail, actually. We have four people that have submitted comment requests tonight. Heather Wiley, if you would come forward, please, and just state your name and where you reside. Welcome, Heather.
Hi, Council members. I'm here to talk. I reside in Waterville, but very much so. My children are a part of Lucas County 4H, which resides here in the city of Mami at the Lucas County Fairgrounds. I am coming to speak with you today in regards to the parent, the parental concern as well as a 4H advisor concern. A truck show was recently canceled at our fairgrounds, which brings in huge revenue for our 4H kids and being able to host our fair. I'm coming to you guys just to find out, or at least plead as a parent and an advisor, that as we have further events that come up at the Lucas County Fairgrounds and have to file for permits or have to file for things to go further, that you consider the children. Because a lot of the funding that goes there, we have Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, FFA, 4H, Ag Society, all of those kids rely on those events held on the property to fund them. I, as an advisor, also have to go out and get donations for the children. Because there is so much backlash between social media, things in the community, things being canceled, things like that, it makes it very hard, because the businesses do not come forward to help the children of 4H. So it's very hard for us as volunteers that are not paid positions to come forward for these kids, for helping these kids to fulfill ambitious, non-threatening, non-harmful activities. Let's face it, we have enough stuff that goes on here in the community, not just in Mami, but in Toledo and other surrounding areas, where we have kids that are out doing very harmful, non-positive things. And when we do not have the funding to keep program that is keeping leaders and community members in a safe atmosphere and doing productive things, then we end up with the non-productive things that trickle their way into Mami, trickle their way into other areas, and so on and so forth. So I'm pleading as a parent and as an advisor that you consider when we have events and things that need permits, that this highly impacts the children and the fairgrounds for the kids. That is all.
Thank you. If we can respond to you, we'll wait till everybody speaks. Okay? Mr. Cox?
Bill Cox, 937 Gibbs Street. The other day, I had an opportunity to go down River Road doing some stuff, and I stopped by the cemetery over there to just kind of take a look and see what was going on. On my tour of the cemetery, I happened to notice that they, there were three American flags that had been run over by the mowing company and were shredded and laying out in the yard, as well as some of the sticks that supported them. I stopped and took the time to pick them up and so they could be disposed of properly. Along with that, after that, I said, well, I might as well take a look around while I'm here and see, and I noticed that some of the supports for the flags and other markers for the veterans had been run over by the lawnmower company. Along with that, I noticed that some of the items that had been placed on memorials by people, or the people who were there, were also knocked over in the yard. I took the time to straighten the markers and to pick them up and put them back on the stones as they should be. This kind of act, and along with that, I noticed that a lot of the stones were covered up by cut grass and clippings that were laying around and other things. I think as a veteran, retired veteran of the country, I think that that was totally unacceptable to find that kind of action going on by the lawnmower and company. And I thought, well, maybe I'm just being too picky. So I went up to the St. Joseph Cemetery and took a look around, very neatly kept, nothing destroyed, nothing bent, no grass on the markers, it was well done. I'd like to request that the company be dismissed that's mowing the grass at the cemetery and that contract be rebid. There's no reason for that, and I think that's totally unacceptable. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, Bill. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Bill.
Sherri Shunk? Sherri?
Before I start tonight, just ask for Ted's attention. He keeps playing on his phone and-
Go ahead, you have three minutes. Go ahead.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
I watched the last council meeting online, and I thought I was watching a remake of Abbott and Costello, who's on first, what's on second. Moving on, I'm going to continue addressing the lies and half-truths that were from the mayor article and from the last council meeting. Margot, I saved the last two ridiculous statements you made for last. Your statement, "I have been made aware that some individuals who signed the recall petition have been advised to file harassment claims against me if I simply engage in conversation with them." That statement tells me two things. First, they knew who you were, the individuals, and they knew that you contacted people that signed the rental petition and by calling to verify their name. So actually, your statement was false. When citizens questioned where the petitions were filed, they were informed the BOE and any concerns to contact the BOE and the Secretary of State, which I have done. Never was there any mention of harassment claims. Your statement, "I am very concerned about what will happen if multiple new people are installed all at once," there will be a lot of institutional knowledge lost. And then you went on to say, "There has been mention of firing all those on the second floor," which is even more concerning situation. You go on to say more, but it's ridiculous and a joke. However, to state firing on the second floor, who, what, and when, has that ever been mentioned by anybody in the recall or in, associated with the recall? Have you seen the city's organizational chart? The removal of employees came from the person to your left. More importantly, I view your statement as intimidation geared towards city employees and citing fear of job loss if they should vote in the recall. Now to move on to the man to your left. Mr. Birch, your comment so recklessly in the last council meeting that two accidents were from drunk drivers was appalling and slanderous. I contacted both women, Catherine's granddaughter and Suzanne. Both were shocked and upset to hear that they, that it was stated that they were drunk, when in fact, it was a terrible design probably by you and unleaded road hazard that was the cause. I don't know if you were spouting off from your experience when you hit the medium and took out a tree, but these women were not drinking. I have talked to even-
Are you suggesting I was drunk, Sherri?
No, I, no.
I can speak.
But be, yeah. Be accountable for your actions and your poor design. It's unleaded. Pull up the police report. It's very clear-
Right here, five of them, three drunk drivers, not two.
Well, you didn't say that.
Thank you. Thanks for your thoughts. The last one is Aaron Collins, if you would, please.
Do I get the three minutes back that you stole from me last month?
If you want to state your name and then where you reside.
Real quick question. Will I get my three minutes back, if I do that?
We'll start three minutes now, chief. Go ahead.
My name is Aaron Collins. My address is 318 West Harrison, sorry, that's Margot's, 1118 Hugo Street, wrong again, that's Scott's, 640 Bennington Drive, that's Josh's. Patrick, yours is 3128 Stonewall. I'm sorry, they're disorderly. John Fiskett, 1018 Kirk Street. Philip Lineback, can I, can I not get interrupted, please? This is my time to speak. They're disrupting the meeting. Okay? Philip Lineback, 290 Broadway Street. Ted Kirk, 418 West Dudley. Mr. Barrow, yours is 716 Inwood. And Mr. McDonald, 2222 Linden.
Inwood Place.
Another sheet, but, so speaking of Mr. Birch's address, 3128, when you do a public records request for all police reports for your home and in the city of Mami, there are no calls, no calls for service whatsoever for your address for anyone throwing garbage on your property, being at your door, following you. If you were so scared for your safety, you would think that, you know, you'd call the police. My address is of no concern to you, and I've said that before. Ohio Supreme Court has ruling on that, McIntyre v. Ohio Election Commission. I've given you a cease and desist letter. I've also given you notice of intent to sue. I know you have it. I handed it to you personally in the stairwell. Casey, I gave the rest of them to hand out to everybody. I've also emailed it to all of you. To force these people to give their name and address up, when some of these people are scared of the retaliation from this board, is ridiculous, and it's a violation of well-established case law. Keep it up, and everyone that's forced to give out their address will sue. Alan, you cited Ohio Advice Code 4511.251 as the reason to shut down the Northwest Ohio Showdown. Did you read subsection E, or did you just stop and said burnout? Subsection E states, and I quote, "This section does not apply to the competitive operation of vehicles on public or private property when the political subdivision with jurisdiction of the location or owner of the property knowingly permits such operation thereon." The Lucas County Commissioners own that property, and they have a board that allows that to happen. For you to shut that down and then to sue them and the event coordinator for $25,000 each is ridiculous. You guys need to get your head out your butts. The people of Mami are getting angry. Absolutely ridiculous, the amount of money that was lost from that Northwest Ohio Showdown greatly affects this, more than the $25,000 for each of those you're trying to recuperate. This is insane. Now, what I came here to ask last time, before I was thrown out, was, Margot, everyone else in the council, you made some statements which I'm still looking into, would you tell who it was that threatened you up here on the podium?
We're not having conversations.
Oh, no, no, it's for later on. You know, I can ask questions of you guys. You guys can choose to answer if you'd like. The most important thing is, who determines what a robo-email is, right? You guys aren't responding to people that send out roboemails. How do you know the roboemails? Who makes that determination? Does anyone have an answer to that? You can email me, you have my email address. You have my real address, by the way, on the paperwork. I don't live at 555 North Erie Street, that's the police department. That is not my address. I will not give my address, ever, on this microphone or YouTube. All right, not going to happen. Why didn't anybody enter, why didn't anyone speak up? None of you spoke up. What these people are yelling at-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time's expired.
You're cowards.
Thank you so much for your thoughts. Appreciate that. No more disruptions in the group, please, thank you. That concludes our comments. Thank you for your thoughts. Just to try to help, try to help answer some of the- Mr. Collins? Mr. Collins? We're moving on with our business meeting. So to help try to explain, for Mr. Shunk, she asked about some of the police reports that were down on that island. There actually were five police reports that were on that island, and three of them were OVIs. And one was a failure to control, and the other was a marked lane's, marked lane's violation. And those are designated police reports. You're welcome to pull those from the police department if you'd like. But there were three OVIs on that island, just to help, help clarify that, so you understand that. And also, as far as the rec center is concerned, I certainly do understand the concern with the 4H. But let me just kind of give you some details about what happened that led up to that. And I certainly support the 4H wholeheartedly. I go to the fair every year, and that's one of the highlights that I love to see, is their auction and the animals that they show and the things that they do. But I would like to clarify recent concerns regarding that truck show. The fairgrounds are zoned residential, and all events there require city approval. The event in question, organized by Mr. Austin Farrell, was originally presented to the city as a standard truck car show. A permit was issued under, with that understanding, to him, with reasonable conditions to ensure the safety of attendees and nearby residents, prohibiting burnouts, excessive noises, and other high-risk activities, which he proved he did that last year with no permit and did not go by anything the city was asking him to do. He had the event anyway. He originally accepted those conditions. However, shortly afterwards, he publicly advertised the event as a burnout event, directly violating the agreed permit and city ordinances. The city attempted to resolve the issues with him with direct communications and meetings and the fair board, and unfortunately, Mr. Farrell ceased all communications with us, threatened legal action, and the fair board did not respond to any follow-ups. Due to the lack of cooperation and the planned violation of the permit terms, the city had no choice but to pursue legal means to prevent an unapproved and potentially dangerous event from occurring. It's also important to note that the Lucas County Commissioners, who own the fairgrounds property, explicitly stated through their legal counsel, they did not authorize any type of a burnout event on their property. Under Ohio law, such activities are not permitted on private property without the owner's consent. As public safety remains a top priority, the city made every effort to permit a lawful event, and we regret that the organizers chose not to comply. The problems with that event kind of started last year, when they didn't want to comply last year. So, but I do fully appreciate the 4H and how they do fundraise and the importance of that. So, thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Okay, I did skip the city administrator update. I'm sorry, Mr. Birch, if you want to retract back to that?
Yeah, the only update I have right now is I just want to give kind of a sense of my conversations with the state EPA, their chief legal counsel and their deputy director regarding where we are with the authority to spend money inside private residences. Spoke with them on Friday, Thursday and Friday, actually. The law director and I had a conversation. One of my questions was, are we being delayed because there needs to be a new director's findings and orders issued and attached to a consent decree? And they said, no, that they are actually adding the language from the consent decree and the PowerPoint endorsed by council, which is this program, into the consent decree as a matter of narrative. So, and they said in a couple weeks, we'd have the first draft. I just wanted everybody to be aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to adoption of the agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Mr. Kirk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
As revised, actually. As revised. Thank you.
We'll be the thing for-
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Any further discussion on that? Then we'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Approval of the meeting minutes of May 5th, 2025. Yes, Mr. Fiskus, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of the May 5th, 2025 meeting.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any further discussion? And we'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Petitions and communications and motion to accept the PNR and place on file.
Our movement to accept the communications.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk?
I will second Barrow's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. This is an article on how water is treated. It's a blade article that was shared with council. Any further discussion on that? Hey, we'll call the roll.
Harris.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes.
Lineback.
Yes.
Puffenberger.
Yes.
Barrow.
Yes.
Fiskus.
Yes.
Number 10 is consent calendar. We'll need a motion to approve in a second, and then we'll discuss these. Ms. Puffenberger?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that. Thank you. A is a recommendation from the finance director. It's a second reading of resolution 011-2025, declaring the necessity of lighting in streets and public ways in the city of Mami. The city is planning to increase safety effort and replace dilapidated posts and fixtures with this resolution. So this is not the assessment in any way. This is basically the resolution and second reading. We moved 10B to 11E. The next one actually will be 10B, recommendation from the city administrator, first reading of ordinance 14-2025, amending section 1305.10 and ordinance 003-2024 of the Mami codified ordinances specifying and coordinating narrative section 13- of the Maumee Codified Ordinances specifying and coordinating narrative Section 130510 and homeowner affidavit. Any discussion on that? And Mr. Leibach?
There were some concerns over the homeowner affidavit. Maumee's had provisions that the homeowner has to perform their own work relative to any permits that they take out, and we'd amended 130510, and we made it, we added some language to that that people found objectionable, so we just wanted to amend that language to make it more clear as to homeowners' work on their own property that they reside in and who may assist them if they're pulling the permits themselves.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion on that? And actually, 10D is now 10C. It's a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing St. Joe's Catholic Church to close 100 block of West Broadway between Conan and Allen in front of the church on Sunday, June 22, between 10:00 AM and 4:00 for the purpose of a parish-wide family fair event. And this pretty much happens every year on that. Okay, the consent calendar is before council for approval. We'll call the roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. 11A, new business, a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing a contract with... Malzuski, thank you. Lawn and landscape for planning, mulching, watering, and staking as needed of the 322 previously ordered trees in Arrowhead Business Park, and authorize the city administrator to sign and effectuate said contract in an amount of $112,700. Two bids were received, one from Promo and one from the listed contractor. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll take a motion in a second, please.
I move to accept that bid as presented.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. 11B, recommendation from the city administrator authorizing a contract with Promo LLC for planting and mulching of the 200 trees previously ordered for the forestation of the Anthony Wayne Trail, 12 trees as a view blocker of the River Road Drive pumping station, and 12 trees to be planted that were requested by residents and authorize the administrator to sign and effectuate the said contract in amount of $53,100. Again, two bids were received on this, and Promo being listed as the lowest and best. Any other comments on that? Okay, and we'll call the roll, please. Oh, I'm sorry. I need a motion in a second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we pass that ordinance as read.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Leibach?
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll call the roll on 11B.
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And a recommendation from the city administrator authorizing a contract with Crestline Paving and Excavating in the amount of $444,359.10 for the High Street Improvements Project, and authorizing the city administrator to sign and effectuate this said contract. Again, two bids were received for this, Crestline being listed as the lowest and best. We'll take a motion in a second on this, please. Yes?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor McDonald. I move that we authorize a contract with Crestline Paving and Excavating Company.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other comments? Thank you. We'll call the roll on 11C.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. Recommendation from the city administrator authorizing to enter into a contract with Marlow Hercules Fence Company to construct 440 feet of seven-foot-tall white vinyl fencing in the Clinton Street right-of-way east of Jackson for a distance of 440 feet along the north side of the Anthony Wayne Trail in an amount of $27,159. This kind comes from a project supervisor, a part of our administrative staff, and he says, "This fence or vegetation barrier project was discussed at length during the Anthony Wayne Trail Safety Project with the residents on several occasions. The mayor, council president, and at least one other council member, several city staff, including the law director and the city administrator, were involved in these meetings and the discussions to mitigate noise and enhance privacy due to the path being constructed closer to the homes on Clinton Street. The city was unable to complete this project until after Ohio Department of Transportation project closed out the Anthony Wayne Trail project. The city previously removed and relocated other areas of fence that conflicted with this safety project, but that work was anticipated prior to the installation of that construction. The city would like to move forward with the installation replacement of the fence in the Clinton Street right-of-way from Jackson East to a distance of 440 feet. Adding to the taller fence will allow more privacy and sound reduction for the residents whose backyards are above the Anthony Wayne Trail in this area. This project was publicly bid, and we took the lowest and best on this project." Take a motion, please, in a second. I'll so move.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on that? Yes?
Yeah, I actually have a question. I didn't see this in the 2025 budget. Was it in there since it was from past?
The report says that it's not been budgeted. We have to do a budget later on.
Okay.
Yes.
So, but it will happen, so it's going to happen in 2026?
No, it'll have to happen here as a later budget adjustment, like we do with a lot of things that we do during the process.
Okay. And is it a safety necessity for the fence?
According to one of the homeowners that was out there, I think you spoke with the woman that was there. I don't think she longer lives here, but I don't know if it was you, Margot, or somebody.
I had spoken with her.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Originally. The original conversation.
And I guess my other question is, why this wasn't like lumped with the other fence requests from the last meeting?
Because it wasn't ready to do at that point.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Any other further discussion? Yes, Mr. Fiskus?
Yeah, I'm kind of echoing what Ms. Puffenberger said. I would prefer that, you know, we went through the, all the budget stuff a few meetings ago. We were very, you know, diligent about saying it's a budget, we want to stick to it, and now we're going outside of the budget, so it's a hard one for me to swallow.
Anything further?
Nope.
Yes, Mr. Leibach?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I definitely see where Councilwoman Puffenberger and Councilman Fiskus are coming from. I walked that area several times in the past couple of days since we received this, and I do think that if I lived there, I would really appreciate, you know, having the fence. I think it's the kind of expenditure, you know, of the taxpayers' money that's actually going to help somebody's, you know, one of those taxpayers', you know, quality of life, so... But I understand this is maybe not a real easy one to decide.
I would kind of echo your concerns, Mr. Leibach. I too have looked at that and how the proximity of it and how it would really benefit the people that live there, and I would echo your same sentiments. Yes, Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. I also had met with the lady, and now she had young children, and it was the path just at the edge of their property, actually right on the edge of the property, and for privacy and safety, it's, I decided a year or two ago that that was a good option for us. Thank you.
I do not doubt it's a good option. I just wish it would be. I mean, it's already been since when? When the project ended, we didn't budget for it. It seems like it's been known about for a long time. It seems like it could wait till next year. Those are my sentiments.
So this, let me just clarify. Would this be a B fund expenditure?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not a current expense? Just so everybody's clear.
Mr. Mayor, if I could...
Yes, go ahead. Yep.
And I apologize that it hadn't come before. This is almost three years ago that we had these conversations with the property owner, maybe two and a half, and I did walk the property two Saturdays ago with all the property owners abutting, and they understand that this wasn't budgeted. I made it clear to them, too, and that council would have to approve this as a special item. So, the point is, it's my mistake for not bringing up during budget time. I simply forgot it. I mean, it's been a long time, and the project was just closed out. Just because the project's been done doesn't mean it's been closed out. So, sorry.
We'll call the roll on this issue.
Harris?
No.
Kurt?
Yes.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
No.
That motion carries, then? Thank you. And then 11E is the old 10B, which is a recommendation from the finance director. A second reading of ordinance 13-2025 amending Maumee Codified Ordinance 169-2015 and Section 194.05 of the Maumee Codified Ordinances requiring employers to issue more than 10 W2s to file electronically. Yes, Mr. Barrow?
Thank you. Yeah, the reason that I was, I asked for it to be moved to new business was, I'd like to get this referred back to the finance committee for more clarification and more information gathering about the W2s, about the need for companies who have more than 10 employees that file electronically. This might be a hardship on some smaller businesses that don't have that capabilities, and so I'd just really like to look at it closely to see what we're dealing with. So I'd move if that goes recommended to the finance committee.
I'm going to move for a motion in a second first before we do that.
Sure.
Any other further discussion? It was in the agenda for a motion. Can I have a motion in a second?
Yes, I would, I would move the passage of Ms. Harkey's recommendation for the finance chair, for the finance director.
Okay. Do we have a motion on the floor to approve it? It's a proceed.
I'm sorry, excuse me. My motion was...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I had a motion on the floor to refer it to finance committee for more in-depth...
I misunderstood. I thought you were just giving an opinion.
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
My, okay, confusion.
All right, so we do have a motion to refer it to finance committee?
Yes.
And is there a second?
Can we not ask a question?
After we second it, you can.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second. Go ahead, Ms. Puffenberger.
This was, we did discuss this in finance, correct?
Didn't, wasn't really in-depth, and we didn't have any information ahead in front of us. I asked a couple of questions, and I didn't get a good answer, enough information to answer to recommend to the city.
I thought I remembered Donna saying quite a bit, but okay.
I think we just need to have more information. That was my feeling. Thank you.
Jennifer, did you want to give any information? Here before, did anyone make a, we had a second? Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Anything else from council? Yes, Mr. Fiskus?
This would probably be a question for the finance director, then. Is there a pressing time issue if we send this back? Or do we need to continue the readings?
No, if, and that's why it was never an emergency. You read the documentations for tax years 2025 or later, and this is in compliance with the Social Security Administration, the federal level and the state level, what employers are already required to do. If they have 10 or more W2s, they are already required to file electronically, and we accept that same format that they are already filing, so this is not a burden at all.
Thank you.
Okay, the current motion is to send this issue to finance committee, and we have a second. We'll call the roll on that.
Harris?
Yes.
Kurt?
No.
Leibach?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
No.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Motion carries. That issue was referred back to finance committee. Thank you.
Will someone be, will set up a meeting soon to discuss this soon?
You tell me. You need it.
Okay.
All right, we'll move to comments. I will start. A couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Maumee Rotary Silent Auction on May 2. They raised almost $75,000, the Rotary did that evening. It basically funds their projects for the year, and it's obviously an all-volunteer organization, and all the money goes to communities. Some of the things that Maumee has benefited from in the past is they bought the electric Jeeps for Safety City. They've done that actually a couple of times. They kind of wear out, and they've bought it again. They built the pavilion down at Sidecut Park and actually donated that. And also, they give away several scholarships to Maumee High School kids. So that's what they do locally. They also reach out to some organizations internationally as well. So, thank you to the Maumee Rotary for everything that they do. I'm proud to be part of that and what they do for a number of communities. I also would like to comment on that. It was great to see the airshow return to our area. It's been a few years. I have a very high passion for that airshow and the whole air guard out there. My son-in-law is a master sergeant and serves, and his two brothers actually are F-16 pilots, and it's very close to home. I talk to those guys all the time, and that air guard base is an integral part of a lot of communities, not only Maumee but also surrounding area, and it's really proud to know that we have them out there and that they were able to display their talents along with a lot of other things on that airshow. It's always an exciting thing to see that every year that that comes back. Also, like to give condolences to the Tim Wagner family. He passed away on May 10. Served on city council as council president, and Mr. Wagner also served as mayor from 1999 to 2012, so condolences to his family as well. I'd also like to recognize Police Week last week in honor of the brave men and women that are dedicated to serving, especially our Maumee police officers. Proud to be one myself in serving that capacity, and Chief, you guys doing a nice job, the men and women there, and thank you for all that you do. And also, this week is National EMS Week, and also honoring our paramedics that serve[1610.71] And also, this week is National EMS Week, and also honoring our paramedics that serve our community 24/7. And it's nice to know we have those guys on, and gals on full-time status, serving our community. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Transportation Summit, the TMACOG Transportation Summit, which they have every year. It was on April, actually April 24th. I haven't had a chance to just serve out to Council, and this is for your information, really. I would just like to kind of update you about some things that were talked about there. The ODOT update, in the next three to five years, some of the projects that are coming out of District 2 ODOT on the horizon. Route 20 in Perrysburg by Costco, that Divergent Diamond and Roundabout is going to be re-engineered. That's going to be a real treat when they do that. But it didn't turn out the way it was. There's some accidents that are coming as it feeds off that ramp, especially in front of Costco, lanes that are very confusing. And so that's something they're going to be looking at in the next three to five years. I'm sorry, that Route 25. And then on Route 20, they're going to put a Divergent Diamond in a number of roundabouts there. When they shut down Route 20 in Perrysburg, that's going to be a very difficult trek through there. Also, Airport Highway, they're looking at a redesign down through there. The I-475 widening project and Seacor Road interchange is also slotted to be reworked as well. The dustel drive transition to the pavement, it needs to be flattened out. There's some transition ramps there that goes from the bridge down onto the pavement that are a little rough and kind of ramped. They need to be smoothed out. That's more than likely going to be done this summer, maybe one to two months, that they're going to have to, ODOT's going to have to kind of fix that. In 2025, also, early summer, the 28 interchange should be completed on Illinois. We need to complete signalization landscaping barricade removal. The concrete multi-use path on the interchange that they fed off the bridge, there was really good feedback that Maumee continued that concrete down onto Illinois. Thank you to Council that approved that. That was a nice touch, and that was definitely noticed by TMACOG and a lot of the area partners about how that's now looking as it comes off the bridge and it continues to be concrete. Also in 2025, Lucas County is planning on widening Monclova from Jerome to Maumee City. So you can anticipate that. Also, the Gordie Howe Bridge is slotted to open later this summer. It's a 167-acre customs area at the Gordie Howe Bridge up in Detroit to move traffic and trucks through there at a larger scale, also a state-of-the-art customs area. And also, TMACOG is going to have their freight conference that's going to be held at the Glass City Pavilion in Marina, in the Marina District downtown. And they're doing a trek up there to, to look at that and the layout on that, on that, on that bridge. It's going to be a big game changer for trucks that are traveling through here, or even businesses that want to set up here regionally, to know that they can get to and from Canada on a much quicker scale. And so, that's a big, that's a big game changer for the area. I know a lot of people don't think that that is, but it is. It really is. What they were doing with, with the old Ambassador Bridge is many trucks were being diverted electronically with, from their dispatchers to avoid even going to Detroit. Trucks were coming up from the south and even getting diverted to Buffalo and other areas to try to get across to Canada because the Ambassador Bridge was, was backlog so bad. So this, this would be a good thing for the whole area. Also in 2026, the Turnpike Bridge Deck over the Maumee River is going to be reworked next year. It needs to be replaced, so they're looking at that. Also, Lucas County in 2026 are also looking at roundabouts at Monclova and Albin, and Monclova and Waterville, Monclova. So as you go out Monclova Road, it'll get repaved this year, more roundabouts next year, trying to feed a little bit more of the township in a more expeditious way. 2028, Lucas County is looking at a roundabout at Anthony Wayne Trail and Dutch Road, a couple more years down the road at that intersection there. Overall, a lot of the discussions that took place from the traffic engineers, they had a discussion panel that was up there, is that ODOT is really focusing on traffic calming in a lot of their projects and the way they engineer things, similar to what we did in the uptown area here through Maumee. That is really becoming a basis of how they look at things and, and how they engineer traffic. They want to calm it down, try to reduce speed by design, and not so much by enforcement and signage, to make people slow down. So the use of roundabouts, road dieting is also something that's big on their horizon, reducing speeds through design. So, again, kudos to Council for the vision, and our administration as well, for seeing that and applying some of those same principles in Maumee. In fact, Maumee is really leading the, leading the charge on a lot of that in the area. And so. Also, they talked about a, a big use of concrete material and how the, how the technology has come with the use of concrete, its durability, sustainability, higher reflectivity to light, and optimal performance, and that is obviously whenever they can use concrete, that is the preferred method over blacktop, whenever they can. Obviously, in large interstates, there, that is not an option. So, anyway, it was very informative. Spent a day listening to a lot of information, and I just shared that with Council so you kind of know what some of the projects are doing. Yep. And we'll move on to Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. First, I just want to thank you for letting me call in today, as I'm down making some memories with my family, it's the most expensive place on earth. I do want to piggyback off of Bill Cox. On Saturday, I was driving on Conant Street. I noticed that there was a really tattered flag hanging. As I continued down, I saw two more that were kind of hanging on by a thread. I just want to kind of ask that, with Memorial Day coming up, if we could go ahead and put some newer pristine flags up. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kurt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify something with Ms. Harkey. Jennifer, am I correct? You use the computers and applications to put everybody's wages in there, the folding and so forth, then you press the print button, and their W2s come out, and you mail them to the employees. With this new IRS rule, and by the way, you know that when the IRS tells you to jump, you have to ask how high. But anyway, with this new regulation with the IRS, in addition, in addition to putting the print button, you go over and you print the send to IRS button.
Right.
So you've already done it?
Yes.
It's just the extra step of pressing the remit button or the submit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and it's actually not a new regulation. They first implemented it into, the IRS first implemented it in 2015. The threshold was 25, and then this last year, they've, in 20, for 24 returns, they implemented it for 10 or more.
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to state for the record, beginning of the meeting, I hit a little alarm that my blood sugar was creeping up a little bit, so I used my phone, not to text anybody, I used it to deliver a little bolus of insulin. A couple of times during, as we were going through the agenda, I used it a couple of times to read the agenda because I left my paper copy at home, so. I'm not playing on the phone, I don't know why everybody would assume, presume that I'm texting somebody, because I'm not. And just now, this may look like I'm texting, I'm using the insulin pump to check something else, so. That's all I have to say about that. That's it, it's, go ahead. Never mind, I'm finished.
Thank you. Mr. Linebacke?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. Very early in my first year on Council, Mayor Carr shared an opinion about voting that has stuck with me. He stated that when you vote no on an agenda item, it's helpful to give you a reason for doing so, whether or not others agree with the reasoning. It's, it's helpful for people who are listening, who are here, just try to understand where see a Council person coming from. I think there are also occasions when you should do the same when you vote yes. And there were two items on the agenda tonight on which I voted yes, but with reservations. My reservation, the two items were the motions to authorize contracts for planting trees. My reservation with the tree planting contracts is that the planting portion of the project was disconnected from the purchase, rather than be treated as a complete package that combined the total cost to purchase and to plant. That, that's something that's certainly common in private industry, where you, with capital projects, I'm not saying this is a capital project, but, you know, senior management would want to know what's the total cost of this project before we embark on it. Well, the fact that, in this case, you know, we have different suppliers, and I think the fact that there are different suppliers for the trees, and the, I'll call it the installation, different suppliers does not, in my opinion, preclude bundling the two phases into one project. Now, if Council had voted no on the planting contracts, you know, what would happen with the purchased trees? You know, would they be, would they still be usable, or would the money have been wasted? You know, we just didn't plant them. I prefer to vote on an entire project before committing any funds. In this case, where I voted yes, I did not think I had the liberty to vote against it if I had thought the money could be directed to better uses for our residents. So, it's kind of really a process issue. My second-to-last item is I recommend, heartily recommend, the Memorial Day event that's being held, the Battle of Fallen Timbers Monument, that's going to be on Sunday, May 25th at noon. I've attended for several years, and I think it's worth your time to observe the ceremony that goes on, and hear what some of the local area elected officials have to share, including our very own Mayor McDonald, who's been a speaker there. I certainly hope to see some of you there. Thank you, Mayor McDonald.
Thank you. Councilperson Puffenberger?
Thank you. I wanted to, just one thing, I wanted to show, share an event that we're having on June 10th at 7:00 PM at the Maumee Branch Library. We will have Jody Haney, who is a member of our Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission, a lifetime Maumee resident and Professor Emerita, Bowling Green State University in Science Education and Environmental Studies. She's doing a talk where the name of the presentation is Go Green and Save. So she says, "Want to go green and perhaps save money on your electric bill too? We'll walk you through how to use Ohio's apples-to-apples energy comparison website to find renewables, electricity plans that work for your home and values. Whether you're new to energy choice or just want to explore 100% clean energy options, we'll show you step-by-step how to compare suppliers, understand contract terms, and make the switch without any service interruption." She, so she just asked if you're coming to the event and you'd like some help with this, to bring a fully charged laptop or, or phone, or any sort of device that you would like to kind of go through and see how you might want to be a part of or not a part of, the information she's going to be sharing, and that's being presented by the Environmental and Tree Advisory Commission. June 10th at the library at 7:00 PM. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrow?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. But Council on Linebacke said, I think, I'd like to see that too. Sometimes we get caught up. I would like to see that whole package, at least an approximate package cost of funding the trees with the labor. And I know you can't nail it down because sometimes it's months and months down the road before Part B comes into me, is something we can look at. Thank you. And also, I love the 4H Club. We'd always would donate it when people would come to our store, still would still do so. But when, when, this last time that had happened, when somebody wants to do this loud, obnoxious noise, because you have neighbors up and down Key Street, on those neighborhoods, that part of it, in my opinion, is unfair, and I wish they could have worked something out, honestly. That I can talk to you after the Council meeting. Thank you. But I appreciate what you do. It's a great program. We've had our customers for decades in it. Thank you. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Fiskus?
Thank you, Mayor McDonald. I'm last, and I actually have stuff still on my list, so that's impressive. We had our Parks and Rec meeting last, last week. It was after the deadline for the agenda, so I just wanted to go over a couple, well, the two items we went over, so we don't have to wait till next meeting. We discussed the pool dates at Rolf Park. Opening weekend is May 31st, June 1st, and then we go until August 10th. That's all kind of dependent on our lifeguard, so that's when we have them, that's when we can open the pool. We previously voted to keep rates the same, so the pool is ready to go in a couple of weekends here. Also, we talked about the, the new playground at Ford Park and some of the other updates. I'm excited to, when we get that rendering of the playground, hopefully we can post it on the Facebook page and everyone take a look at it, because I think it's going to be a really cool thing for the whole community. I am going to cross paths here. My wife is normally the schoolperson, but I had to give a shout-out to the Maumee School Art Department. They do a crossover project with kindergartners and high school art kids. I have a kindergartner. He came up with an idea for a monster. They gave it to the high school art department, and the students there created the monster for him. It was probably the coolest thing I have ever seen. I wanted to bring it tonight, but I was so deathly afraid I would drop it and break it, and I was not going to deal with him doing, getting upset about that. So shout-out to the art department at Maumee Schools. Speaking of art, down at the tow path, there is a snake growing. So now that your kids are home from school, they're painted rocks, people are adding on to the snake, and it's growing little by little each day. I went and checked on it yesterday on the way home with the, the boys, and it's got a couple bricks in its body, which is a little weird, but any, anything is cool. So if you are looking for something for your kids to do this summer, have them paint a couple of rocks and take them down there. And also, Farmer's Market is finally coming back to Maumee next Wednesday, correct? The 28th?
28th.
And I'm really excited for that. Lots of new, interesting vendors, and I think it's going to be a really cool event right out here in the parking lot. Don't worry, no roads are closed for it, so it will be real fun for the community. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add just a couple more things. Obviously, the Memorial Day Parade next Monday goes off at 9 o'clock at Second Street and White, and will come up through the downtown area. Also, the Kid Mayor Program got a little bit more traction. I'll be visiting the schools on Wednesday in all three of their classrooms, all three schools, to visit with all the third graders and talk about a number of subjects. And the winners of the essays will also be there as representative of their class. Also, Ms. Puffenberger, I appreciate the fact that you've recruited me and my wife for a garden box out at the Walcott House. We spent most of today out there. Thank you, Lynn, for all her hard work that she did today.
Looks great.
It was kind of like Beauty and the Beast kind of a thing. I was the guy hauling the mulch and she was planting, but it looks, it looks like it's shaping up, and there's some people that have been out there and making it look nice and, so, yeah. So thanks for that. Mr. Burks, do you have anything further to add?
Just one thing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding tree purchase, throughout my career, I've, we've obviously purchased a lot of trees, whether it's here or other places I've been. And it's always been my experience that when I collectively put tree packages together where the tree ends up guaranteed, and the, and the contractor planting actually purchases the tree, takes care of the delivery, the prices are almost double what they would normally be for that package. That's why I do not do it that way, and I don't present it that way. That, that being said, it doesn't mean they couldn't be more related and be communicated better that way. So, that's why I usually do it that way, but in the future, we'll make sure that they're connected in some way, they're easily more understandable, so. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last order of business is executive session. There'll be no more Council after that, no more purpose of Council. So I'll take a, a motion in a second for executive session, pending litigation and personnel.
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to enter executive session for pending litigation and personnel.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Harris?
Kurt?
Yes.
Linebacke?
Yes.
Puffenberger?
Yes.
Barrow?
Yes.
Fiskus?
Yes.
Thank you.
We'll call you back.
We'll call you back.
Okay.
I hear you there.[1194.13]